Motion open in zone 4318.
I can summarize it if you'd like.
Sure.
We know what it says.
Yeah.
So the question is, what do we have on the formality?
November 5th?
Yep.
There's nothing on that date right now.
Okay.
So I actually agree with that meeting.
That's probably.
On society induction for my home.
Is that a week off?
No, it's not. It's actually.
It's the following week.
This says this event will be.
If that's the case, maybe we should just call it December. First meeting in December.
Yeah, but that was gonna be one of my other questions. If you knew your December meeting is scheduled. I think December 5th.
I believe it's the first.
December 5th would be the first.
And what's the, so 14th is 19th?
Yeah.
Hearing for all the.
Special permit renewals.
Yeah.
You doing that on the 19th?
I guess so.
You should do it on the second.
Yeah.
We do one meeting in December.
How many special permit renewals do you have? Because basically then you used to have that expiration date on them. And I think if one of us got away from that, so there's probably not that many renewals.
We haven't. Yeah, we haven't got.
We just haven't had ones that would generate that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
December 18th.
I think we should continue with the summer 5th.
Okay. Make a motion to continue case number 4318 to 7/5th, 2024.
Remember the name?
Second.
We can make a 25.
You're a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mail?
Aye.
I mean, we could still put our special permit renewals on for that day, right?
Yeah. Years ago, that years ago, of course, anyway.
Rather be then on the 19th.
Are you, so are you meeting on the 19th or no?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, okay.
I don't know. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no. I was, I was just trying to. But in, in Nov- in November, you're meeting on the 7th and the 21st. So you have two meetings in November, okay.
As of right now.
Yeah.
But there's nothing on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
So I'm feeling ideas.
Well, and I won't be here for the beginning of it, so you won't have enough board members. Maybe you go. You got Jay.
Jay, yeah. We're not gonna.
Now, Jay's gonna put all his pieces together.
You have one, I gotta get five.
Okay. We'll pick up. Motion open case number 4316. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. Gary Ackerman of 919 Washington Street in Stoughton here on behalf of the applicant, Shaughnessy Crane. CJ Shaughnessy Crane, I'm trying to give the formal name. With me tonight is Mr. Jamie Shaughnessy and to the far right, Chris Shaughnessy as well. If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, before we get into some brief introductory comments, I had occasion today to go by the site again. And I took some pictures, and I know you're gonna be receiving them, you know, just now with this sort of anti-policy. But I, I think they are enlightening for a couple of reasons that I, that I would like to touch on. So what was interesting, you know, I felt, I felt a little bad and perhaps slightly embarrassed at the last meeting when, when some of the questions came up about the entrances and exits to the site. But frankly, I didn't have a better handle on how many entrances and exits there are at that site. And one of the things we submitted yesterday was our proposed traffic plan that you, that you should have in your packet. And you'll see on that, we have, you know, the first, so the two-way entrance and exit, the first one you hit, that's alongside Smokey Bones and then the Olive Garden. Further down the street. And so that first one, you can exit taking a left turn. So that entrance and exit, and one of the issues that came up last month is how would vehicles exit the site? And would they have to go up by BJ's to do so? And you can see here that, that that one is a full two-way entrance and exit, so vehicles can exit that site and take a left turn out to 139, which I think is everyone's preferred route. The second one in the middle, right in front of the building, is an entrance and exit, but you have the median strip opposite that, so you have to take a right. However, immediately after taking the right is the first cut in that median where somebody could, could make a U-turn there. Further up, just past that building, you'll see another cut in the median where somebody could potentially make a U-turn there in off-site from this picture. But folks, I'm sure, are aware, when you get up towards the entrance to BJ's, there is that little rotary where it now more or less serves as that entrance to Amazon. And of course, somebody could go up around the rotary. But again, they wouldn't need to do so because they, they could utilize the first exit, which would allow for a full left-hand turn. Finally, and Chris and Jamie can speak to this in more detail, you see the entrance and exit behind the building that likewise is a full, two-way entrance and exit in also allows for full left turns coming out of the site at, at that location. So the trucks, you know, we anticipate would utilize that to come around the building and then would exit from that location as well. It's just gonna be the easiest way. It's, it's the one that has the closest proximity to the building, and it just makes sense for them to use that. And again, it, it allows for a full left turn exiting the building without any restrictions to go down to 139. So I want to make you aware that as far as the pictures are concerned, what struck me two things primarily that, that you'll see in the pictures. One is the elevation change. If you're standing at the site at that first entrance, and then if you notice, we, we have a curb cut, the first curb cut into our parking area. If you're standing there, and I think in the packet I just handed out, it's three, probably the fourth picture is, is the best one. It's, it's this one here that shows, shows a truck on the left side of, of the parking lot. I apologize, you know, that's, the clarity isn't all that great. Maybe the next one is a little bit better. But that picture, there's quite an elevation drop from that location down to the building. And, and I say that for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is, when, when the fencing is put up here, cars that are coming in and out to go to the restaurants, for instance, they're not gonna see the building. In fact, they're probably not gonna see anything, because with a, with a 10-foot fence and being in that close proximity to it, the, the angle is such that they're gonna be looking over the building. So, so they're really not gonna see anything there. The other, the other pictures that, that I took, which I found very interesting, in which shows the amount of landscaping that is already up there along Tech Center Drive along the property. That, that truck that I pointed out here in the parking lot, that you can see, you know, if you were over, over at Smokey Bones, when you go a little bit further in my pictures, and I think there's a couple of them here, this one here, you see, because of, because of that landscaping, all you're seeing is the top of that truck. Now, keep in mind, that, that landscaping is, is a lot shorter in height than the 10-foot fence that we're gonna be putting up behind that landscaping. And in fact, the only reason you see the top of that truck is because, because it has a, a bed cast. And before, before I say too much about trucks with our, with our resident expert here, here in the room, Mr. Krisky, I, I don't wanna misstate anything. But I just found it interesting that, you know, this picture here, again, was taken, you could see the curb cut was taken, I was standing across the street at the curb cut to that, to that office building. And you don't see, or you only see, the top of that truck. The, the other ones, I think, for instance, you know, something like, something like this one here, with the amount of landscaping there, you're not gonna see in, in our storage area. You're not gonna see the vehicles and the other equipment that are gonna be parked in the storage area, particularly after you add to this, the fencing behind the landscaping. Okay? So I know, I think one of the concerns was sort of along the lines of aesthetics, or what, what would people driving by see as they drive by? And basically, what, what they're gonna see is that landscaping with the fencing behind it, you know? However, I don't mean to suggest, and I wanna point out, and you have it in the other materials that was submitted, I think you'll see from the pictures of Shaughnessy's existing site in Avon, they run a clean facility. Their, their site is clean, their building is clean, there's actually a before and after picture in those materials of the buildings that they have, and their trucks are clean. You know, so this is not going to be, you know, this is not going to be an ISO, let's put it that way. I was trying to think of, of a good metaphor to use, but it's not gonna be an ISO, because they run a clean facility. And the other thing is, keep in mind, unlike Kohl's, they're buying the site, okay? So they're gonna own this site. So they are gonna be invested financially, they are gonna be invested from, from a business standpoint. And obviously, taking care of the site and keeping it looking good is not only good for the community, but it's good for, for them as well. And I think the last thing I, I will mention, and I'll turn it over, Jamie and Chris, Eddie Columbus, anyone to add, is, you know, anyone who's watched the news lately, the reason this site is available is Kohl's is closing a number of its stores, including this one. That's what, that's what made this site available. Retail is going down, not only in Massachusetts, but throughout the country. I just read where Macy's, Social Plaza is closing. Okay? So I think, Jerry Kirkland, I'm wrong, January they're supposed to be out of there, I believe?
Yeah, January, January.
You know, if, if Shaughnessy were not to move in there, I would suspect that that building could be vacant for, for a very long period of time. But I think with Shaughnessy going in there, you're gonna see a vibrant business operating at a attractive site. It is, it can more than adequately coexist with the two restaurants, to the extent that they, that they remain there. The restaurants have an easement to allow for certain overflow parking that I think probably way back when, when they first went in there, was envisioned that maybe they would need, I would suggest that today, they probably don't need overflow parking up there. Hopefully someday they, they will again, and certainly we're gonna provide for that. But, you know, I don't, I don't think that's, that's really necessary. But again, we're gonna provide for it. So you can have an attractive building, a well-known and well-respected company that has found a location that suits their needs well, fits in well, I think, with the, the nature and character of Technology Center Drive. I talked last time how Tech Center Drive has really changed over the years, from the original Knox-Stoughton Industrial Park to, you know, then it became more of a retail. Now you have a mix of, of retail, office, apartments, et cetera. And again, I think you can see from these photos that the site's going to be well-screened. People are not gonna see, you know, what's, what's behind that fence. And, you know, I know, speaking to my clients, they're looking forward to moving into town, getting their operations set up. This is obviously our first step to do so. If this bullet sees fit to grant a special permit for the two special permits, we're requesting the warehouse storage as well as the outside storage. We then will move on to our application for site plan approval with the planning board. So let me ask Chris and Jamie if there's anything you wanna add at this point, or wait to see if the board has any questions.
I think it's difficult to top that. Yeah, I would just, I would just say we spent a lot of time with Barry putting together a lot of information specifically in response to the questions you guys had, so we're definitely happy to chat through any of those again.
I can't find it, but did you see the letter from Craig and Bill?
Haven't seen it. Craig did mention it to me tonight, and I actually asked him, and he was gracious enough to agree to, to stick around. He was up here tonight for the planning board meeting. Thank you. He was up here tonight for the planning board meeting, and I asked him if he wouldn't mind sticking around for this meeting in case the, the board members had any specific questions of him, so that hopefully we can try to address them tonight.
Well, I think you should need to read the letter and then see their recommendations before you.
Can we hear from Craig if he's willing to talk to us?
If you don't mind.
I, yeah, I don't even have a copy of the letter in front of me.
Yeah.
I'll read from, I'll do it for him. Yeah, so we took a look at the site plan based on, in my attendance at the last public hearing. And I know that the, the board had concerns with particularly the truck circulation around the site, so that was one of the things that, that we looked at. And, you know, in my letter here, I'm recommending a couple of different things for access and address to the site. Basically, the same layout can remain. However, I'm suggesting that the northern entrance, the one closest to the restaurants, be restricted to only passenger vehicles and, and not for truck entrance into the Shaughnessy site. They have two other really viable entrances, the other one is, is down close to the north side of the building, and that could be utilized as their entrance into the site. And then the, the exit around the backside of the building, where the existing break in the median island is today, should be used as the exit, so that they can circulate on site just fine if they enter in the front of the building. They have full access to the whole site, and then they can enter around the back, and then the, the trucks are able to make that left-hand turn and head north to 139. There's a couple of comments in the letter. Do you wanna respond to that, or you want me to go on?
No. Why don't you go on, and then we can respond to.
Yeah. I think the first comment is about the, the overflow parking. I just had concerns with the placement of that north screen wall and whether or not it was providing the adequate overflow parking for the adjacent businesses. There's nothing on the plan that documents that, so the placement of that, I think you're providing maybe 30 spaces on the plan for the overflow parking. I just have no way to confirm that that's what was in the, either the easement agreements between the two tenants and what's required through zoning for the restaurant uses. So there's no other parking comps for the other uses. Talked about the access. The 10-foot-high screen fence, that is required by the zoning bylaw, right? So outdoor storage requires a, a 10-foot-high fence. You know, the, the type of the fence, I, I think there's also probably a conflicting portion of the zoning bylaw that restricts the use of chain-link fence. So to have a 10-foot-high, you know, PVC fence or, or solid fence is really difficult to do, right?
The length, yeah.
So it really doesn't make sense that if it is a 10, 10-foot-high fence, that it be chain-link. I think they submitted some materials showing some slats to provide the visual barrier. But I know with my time working with the planning board so much, that they do not like a chain-link fence around the building. So there's a little conflict with, confliction with the zoning bylaw there. I just wanted to point that out in the letter. Truck traffic. The number of vehicles, right? So the applicant did state that they expect 10 to 20 truck trips per day. My gut tells me that that's far less than what would be generated from a, a retail development of the size of Kohl's that's been in, on the site for many, many years. So I expect that would be a reduction, or it should be confirmed with an estimation from the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is a standard document that traffic engineers refer to to estimate the amount of vehicle trips in and out of the site. On the other hand, the passenger trips, so passenger cars in and out of the site, there'll be a great reduction in the volume of, of that trip generation, just because they're, they're strictly, they'll have employees which will drive passenger vehicles, but other than that, it's just the, the 10 to 20 truck trips per day. I think a lot of the items in my letter, although I bring up, you know, some of these points, I think they can be addressed. The applicant's gonna be required to go back before the planning board, the full-site plan review. So many of these things we, we look at again during that process. So even though I brought them up in the letter, I, I really do feel that the special permit for the use could be moved on by the board at this point in time. But just wanted to note my concerns in the letter.
And I think if I may, Mr. Chairman, my only comment to that, and I actually appreciate it again, Craig sticking around. You know, what, what he has done, obviously, is not the full extent of the full site plan review that, that he does as part of site plan review. But to the extent that these comments that he mentioned are basically relative to traffic circulation, you know, number of vehicle trips, that kind of thing, the, the question of the parking spaces, those are really things that go to what the planning board does as part of site plan review. So I would like to suggest to the board, if, if the board were otherwise satisfied with the application, keep in mind, you know, it's for, it's for warehouse storage and for outside accessory storage. If, if the board is satisfied with that and is willing to vote on that, we're gonna have to address these issues and many more as part of the technical review that Craig performs when we apply for site plan review for the planning board. So I don't mean to suggest to say, hey, you know, punt your responsibilities to the planning board, but rather, those are the types of things that are really what site plan review is all about. So I don't think, I, I, you know, I don't think it's lessening the review of, of the analysis that, that either board will do, but rather probably allocates properly what, what analysis one board does versus the analysis that the other board does. So I'd like to suggest that the board is, is otherwise satisfied, that it could, as Craig said, it could vote on the special permit application and then allow us to move forward with site plan review with the planning board.
Also. Send along some questions.
So I guess I, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, if I can, Craig, first.
Sure.
So looking at this plan that we were presented with tonight, which was their circulation plan, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, your recommendation is that trucks enter this way?
Correct.
And they exit, they do whatever they need to do in here, and they exit around the building out that way?
Yes.
Which is their land to exit anyways.
Okay.
Are you thinking it shouldn't make sense to enter this direction?
I, I'm not saying they couldn't enter in that direction. It, it appears that the, the drive aisle is wide enough for two-way traffic in that, in that spot, but I, I think that their exit for truck traffic.
Yeah.
Should be restricted to that.
Yeah. That location. Okay. And I mean, I guess they technically could pull wide there, but they can't pull wide here because of this median. So is there any adjustment that's needed to this area?
Yeah. I bet. I'm expecting that there would be probably some modifications to that, that entrance to allow for the trucks to come in there. I've actually, looking at the plan, sketched out on my own copy of it, some other modifications, because the, their proposal is removing a, a lot of interior landscaping throughout the parking lot. So I've got some, some areas spelled out for my, in my own mind, where I'd like to see some landscaped islands, and they kinda go around that entrance area, which I'd be happy to, you know, obviously go, once we, once you further the, the permitting process, discuss that with you, so.
And so I guess my question would be, if, if this is sort of widened here, what would be the plan proposal for, if there is any, for screening in that area? Would you come up with something?
Yeah, well, it's interesting too, with the, the screening that they've drawn on the plan, the 10-foot-high fence on the plan goes all the way along the frontage, whereas I don't think it really needs to. It could go a dead end into the building.
Right.
So there are some adjustments to the, the fencing and the landscaping that I think can be made to provide adequate screening.
I would just add, it would be, it would be a gate there across the full entrance.
So you're planning a gate in that area?
Yeah, 100%.
So will it always be closed, or will it always open during, when you're open?
Probably open during business, normal business hours, usually from 7 to 5.
So the interesting thing too with those automatic gates and, and trucks pulling off of, you know, like a main drive, we usually like to set them back a bit so that the trucks, you know, waiting for the gate to open in the main roadway. So that's, those are the types of things that we'll, we'll look at.
I can absolutely agree with you, the, but the good thing about this is you have sufficient space for more than one vehicle. Yeah, someone can be pulled off the side of the road. I think there's just under 30 feet of one-way traffic there, you know? So it's very wide.
I would also add that the plan that you proposed, that, that would be preferred for us. We wanted to show that a truck could go in and out of this back entrance. We didn't wanna get into widening the entrance, but if that is something that.
Okay.
Well, well, also, I don't think there'll be a need to so much widen that entrance if some of the island can be removed in front of it, so that we can make the swing in there.
Yeah, I mean, there might be some adjustments that could be made elsewhere, so.
Right.
I, I think it's totally doable, and I think it's, it's worth considering, because the present plan was to enter up by the, the restaurants, and I just think that's a conflict with the, the business types, right? So you have the other entrances, I think it just makes more sense to do it down and away from that.
And then the other question is, did you take a look at this technology drive and the idea of trucks queuing as they were leaving it, or the load carry amount?
No.
Okay. The overflow parking must have been proposed on the original plan, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
So how is that? Is there gonna be landscaping in front of the gate? Like, are you planning on doing it from over here? That's gonna separate the restaurant parking lot from your accessory parking lot?
Per that plan, it was just a fence, but, I mean, obviously.
Is it have some road? We're dealing with asphalt here, so we'd have to dig up, yeah, excavate at islands, so this all takes up space. So, I mean, I guess we can talk about that. We're, we're open to anything, but we're not. So I mean, I guess we can talk about that. We're, we're open to anything, but we're not, we're looking to remove islands from inside of our space. So we're, we're looking to accommodate as best as possible, but I don't think the Olive Garden, you know, people are gonna be worried about some shrubs next to their car.
Well, I guess my, I'm just trying to still envision this visually, and I'm not a fan of chain-link fences with slats in them. Even though that looks very nice in the picture, I keep thinking about, you know, Page Street and what we've got down there where we have a ton of chain-link fences with slats that over the years, and I'm not saying you, you won't care for yours, but over the years they get damaged and it takes time to repair them. And they just don't look, to me, we get PVC fences that get damaged too, but they tend to
Hold up.
And hold up better. And so I don't know about the height, I'm not an expert in that area either, but if you're putting a chain-link fence in this area where it's hidden by the shrubbery, that's one thing. But here it's not, and it's gonna be right around the cars and, so I'm just trying to understand if there's some room for movement around that.
Do we have the proposed product that we were looking at using? Because this is like nothing I've ever seen before, to be honest with you. Yeah, this stuff works. This isn't your standard little install one slab at a time. This thing is like ninety, ninety percent coverage. I'm actually surprised how well it looks, 'cause I'm not a fan of it either, but.
So I don't know that we have to, I mean, we asked you to give us an idea of what you were looking at, which you've done. I don't know that we have to totally get into that, but.
And by the way, that would be black. The brown is just what the manufacturer was showing.
But I will say, these aren't your standard slats. I'd like to see in person myself. It's pretty impressive, so.
Still, like slats to me, so that's just me. You know, I, I want to, I want to bring in something that you're gonna be with us for hopefully many, many years. I wanna bring in something that's gonna sustain that amount of time and be the look that we're trying to encourage here in Stoke. I'm going back.
I understand. We don't cut corners on anything, so.
Okay.
So if I could bring up a point to that comment, I mean, they are proposing to remove, you know, all of interior landscape islands and that brings up a stormwater management issue when we're talking about adding impervious area. And the best way to address that on a site like this, because you have a, you already have a stormwater management system that was designed for a certain amount of impervious cover, it's in place. The best way to not revisit that whole design, if you're removing impervious area and replacing it with pavement, the best way to do that is to remove pavement elsewhere so that you balance that number and you don't trigger into a stormwater management issue where you've gotta reanalyze the system and have to go back at it. So if you need to do screening, if you're removing landscape, interior landscape islands and you need to relocate that somewhere, maybe it's best to bring that up along that fence line so that you get that balance and you don't have to revisit the stormwater management system.
As Chris and Jamie said, I think, I don't think there's any suggestions with her tonight that, that can't be worked out. And I think even, you know, if, if you wanted to put a condition in the decision that, you know, landscaping and fencing as per the planning board's recommendation as part of the site plan approval process, which is really just saying what, what it is anyways. But if, if the board, if for a comfort level to the board, you wanted that part of the zoning board decision, you know, we're happy to include that.
So a couple of other questions. This, the elevations that were presented, I thought we saw we had elevations in the other ones. Is there something different about this?
No, the only thing that was different, Marguerite, and I don't know if it came out all that good, is we showed at the end of those, early last page, we were trying to depict the fencing, but I don't know that it came out all that good, to be honest with you.
I was trying to, I was looking at it on my phone.
Yeah.
It was, it kept freezing my computer when I tried to open it.
I think we, we asked the architect, we had to look, we had to try to give an idea of what it would look like with the fence there. When I first opened it up, I thought it was shadows on, on the pavement, to be honest with you, so.
And then these pictures of the trucks, so, and this of your oversight. So I guess I was envisioning something else when we were describing, so I appreciate this, my visual version, so I just appreciate this. The cranes that you have here, are they ever up? This, these look like they're flapped. I mean, they're stacked on top of each other, but when you describe the crane that we're used to seeing, I'm envisioning a crane that I see, you know, as I'm driving into Boston, that's super high and reaching a building. So do you ever leave them like that?
None of those are actually cranes. Those are all trailers. It's just crane components on trailers. But all of our cranes, every single one of them is a mobile crane, so they transport down the road at under thirteen-six. So none of them are stored in the correct position.
Sure. Are they in any of these pictures?
The reason we only show trucks is because there would be no cranes stored in this location. We just more so wanted to show like the trucks that would be coming in and out of the location. And then those trailers in that picture, those are the types of trailers you would have parked in the lot, the ones that hold the crane components.
And the components that we see on them, would be stored there potentially?
Correct. So in the, in the over, in the bird's eye view picture, like the drones over there, that one. So yeah, those are, and yeah, trailers like that with crane components, so those are, how, what's the height on those with four, five feet trailers?
Under thirteen-six.
Even stacked up like this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, I think that covered my questions.
I had a question on the overflow parking too. If you go to these, they have, aren't they around like an island over here? Next to it, Smokey Bones and Olive Garden.
Chairman, if you looked at the aerial of the traffic.
If I give you a, a thing.
So current, currently, yes, there are islands there and our plan proposes to remove them.
You're gonna remove those?
Uh, yes.
Okay, now.
Not the, not these ones, because this is where you see the overflow parking.
Right.
So those would remain. We're proposing to remove. These where the fencing would go. So these are seven parking spots that are part of the Kohl's lot, and then there's an additional thirty-three here. So we're proposing seven plus thirty-three, forty total overflow.
So when you put the fence up, would you put the fence like here?
Basically.
Just like a square of it up?
Essentially straight across, yeah.
Or, or we could potentially, not to cut you off, but, or we could potentially move just one in the very middle and put the fence on the backside of those islands so that those shrubs and everything are in front of the fence. I wouldn't be opposed to that. But we do want some sort of gate on the side for smaller vehicle traffic. We don't wanna be walked up there. So I wouldn't be opposed to removing just the one island right there and having a, a fence come straight off the back there. Or even do that and maybe close in between the other islands, 'cause you can't escape the one thing. You know what I mean? So add that, add some island in there. So some shrubbery, you know.
Jeff?
I really like this, this visual. And I appreciate the recommendations on the traffic flow. Just to be clear, you know, if there was a condition that the northernmost entrance couldn't only be used for passenger vehicles, that's, and as a petition, that'd be agreeable to?
I, I, I think, I think we'd rather reserve a decision on that until we look at the entire site with, with the planning board because, for instance, depending on what happens with, with this entrance down here in front of the building, it could impact what we need to do up there.
I mean, having large trailers kinda go from this entrance here really does change.
Well, that's why I said, you took the words right out of my mouth. One thing could be, for instance, that we would limit the size of the vehicles that would be allowed to utilize that entrance. The other thing possibly, and again, I wanna couch you with possibly, 'cause I think, you know, the devil is in the details. One could be the hours of operation, 'cause our hours are generally prior to when the restaurants would be opening up. So that's why I say, I, I think, I, I think it would be best to be able to do this sort of collectively as opposed to kinda piecemealing it and say, okay, you know, we'll agree to this for this entrance and this for that entrance until, until we go through that process with the planning board. But I, as I mentioned before, I have no objection with a, with a condition that says, you know, as per the planning board's recommendation. Nothing along those lines. I just don't wanna get tied into a specific traffic flow right now before the planning board and Craig have done their review.
I have another question.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to confirm two things with you guys. So all trucks would be going through that back entrance correctly, correct? On your proposed plan that you brought up today, so, so, 'cause I looked through the pictures of these trucks, right? And I see this smaller one compared to the, you know, the tractor trailers in the later in the packet. So all of the trucks will be going through that, through that proposed back entrance?
Well, again, on the start, 'cause one of the things that Craig was suggesting is that we utilize that middle entrance in front of the building as opposed to we need a back of the building. So I don't wanna say, yes, all trucks will be using that back one, 'cause it may not be that.
And I, I would also add, 'cause I know you mentioned the size of the trucks. This, this plan is super, this picture is like superimposed onto our actual site plan, and that's a scaled-in truck with fifty-three-foot trailer, so the longest possible, uh, that will be pulling into that entrance.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just something with the overhead doors, I just wanted to reconfirm that you, you said no, no trucks are coming, are backing into that. No, nothing's being parked in the building. It's all foot traffic, right?
Correct.
For all the four overhead doors, small? Okay.
Yep.
If you notice in the little, so there's a loading dock out back that we're able to utilize, so. For those types of deliveries.
Okay, yeah. That answers my question. Thanks, guys.
You, you have any questions?
No questions.
Anybody in the audience have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I, Marguerite, when you talked about that high crane and what they showed you, those are the pieces of that crane that you see up that are assembled on site. I'm very familiar with the company and we just had a day today where we celebrated the largest development project we've had in fifty years with a company that worked well, you know, with our staff, you know, with engineering, zoning, all that. And this is a company that you, I think you can already tell is doing that. I, I urge you to look at this company's properties, look at their vehicles. It was said earlier, with retail the way it's going, it's only a matter of time before that whole site of Tech Drive is gonna be vacant. Even BJ's numbers are down from what it used to be, once, I guess, once we got overnight from Amazon, changed the world, right? But these are the types of companies, I speak for at least the majority of the select board, that is willing to do whatever they have to do in their power, I think, very limited, would be curb cuts and maybe not even that on that. But we're, we're glad to have companies that put their investment in. Please look at their property. If you're familiar with Baldwin Street in Avon, they took the old Polar Beveridge building that was horrible looking and planted grass. There was grass there. It looks, I mean, you've gotta see the building if you knew it and look what the quality of the work that these people do. My goal would say, wow, as people are going down, hopefully they expand. One other thing to consider, we're always looking, we've said many times, to bring new revenue into the town that, you know, helps the residents not have to pay increases, and we're, we're moving in the right direction on that. Excise tax alone, you know, with one crane that they own could bring twenty thousand dollars in excise tax to the town. That's not gonna be here now, but who knows what the future lies as, you know, as more becomes available. Maybe they expand on this, and these are the types of companies that we wanna bring to Stoke. And I, I really encourage you, have to look. You will never see a dirty vehicle. There's pride in every area of this company, from the commitment to the owners. I, I could say this now at sixty-three years old, I wish I was as successful as these two young guys, you know? But the, the state of their company and what they've been able to do in a short amount of time and build it the way they did comes with hard work, keeping their word, servicing their customers. And I can see by the presentation here is exactly the type of business we need in Stoke. From a trucking aspect, I mean, we've had more problems with trucking from Amazon than we'll ever have from this company. Because we all remember, and Sherman, you were on the board, Gary, maybe you, when we had that project, BJ's and all that was done and there was, there was supposed to be no truck traffic on Tech Drive, and now it's just common. So that's all I wanted to add. I, I'm hoping that the board supports the vote for the special permit. And I, I would wish the gentleman all the luck. And if there's anything I could do on my end with the select board, you know, we look forward to working together with you all and of course with Craig and, you know, and Mark and everybody at the development end, you know, we'll work together there as well. Thank you.
Do we know the hours of operation that you were looking for?
Um, our seven to two, seven AM to two PM.
Monday through Sunday?
Uh, Monday through Friday. Those are, that's our warehouse shipping and receiving.
Kind of cover the hours for our first whole property though.
Yeah, so, so what do you want on the special permits? We have to put hours in.
That's, that's another thing. We gotta really talk about that. Does that work? With that, for the afternoon?
When, when is?
We start receiving outside haulers at seven AM, seven to two, but our own, our own truck traffic could be earlier than that and a little bit later than that. So I also don't wanna live myself to saying that we're starting at seven AM, so.
Right, okay.
Right, that's why we ask.
Tell the board what you'd like for hours that you feel comfortable with.
I would say five AM to eight PM.
Recognizing that it's not constant going on at that time.
It's not constant at all, but it's just.
We, the board has to put, where it's a special permit, the board has to put in hours of operation.
And what's, is it still Monday to Friday, or would you want the ability to work on the weekend?
Weekends also.
Yeah, but so Monday to Sunday?
Yep. But outside haulers is only Monday through Friday. So any receiving, any deliveries that we are receiving is only Monday through Friday.
Well, five AM to nine PM.
That's even better.
If the disposal opens on nine PM anyway.
Please.
Okay, and the other question was around, so this was, now that we talked about our December meetings, are typically on special permits unless they're more of like a site plan concept. We've been putting some type of renewal period, right? Is that something this part we wanna look at doing here?
I don't know whether I'd wanna put a renewal on right now, because it, it probably won't get in there until spring.
Right, but we've done, sometimes we've gone out like a year, two years. We said it, like we would say December thirty-first of twenty twenty-sixth.
I'm ready for a moment.
We've done that.
With you guys saying.
Yeah, you're wonderful.
What, what happens is, is we give a special permit, when we give a special permit, it, it goes for a period of time. And then if there's no problems and nobody can, uh, complaining once it goes, uh, first time or the second time, we have no expiration date on it.
Okay, understood. Might, might we, might you all consider if we, if we were to do a three-year period, the language is in the statute on the section nine, which says not, you know, not more than three years?
I mean, I, I know you're gonna be timed. We're running up against December anyways. We always say December because that allows us to do them all at the same time, but I don't mind going to the twenty twenty-seven either.
If we could do December twenty twenty-seven, I would just go. With the understanding that you, I think the board's fast practice is that once that first renewal period comes up, normally you remove the.
Soon, there's no issues.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
Okay, so I had a couple of different. Um, okay, so I had a couple of different conditions from before, that some might work and some don't. So one, I think that would still be, I'm sorry, the no manufacturing, repair, vehicle cleaning, um, to be done up at this property. I have, well, I have solid fence, no chain link, so we'll, I guess we'll talk about that in a second. Cranes, and, so I, cranes and trucks remain in Avon, but what is remaining in Avon, just the cranes?
As of now, the cranes mostly.
Okay, so the cranes will remain in Avon. Egress, we had talked about being via BJ's, but that doesn't make sense anymore with your ability, right, so.
Yeah, right, right.
Fence, it will need to be a fence, because I think our bylaws says fence or screening, but I, I actually feel that we would want both a fence and screening. Fence with screening in front, because I do think it's important to have the visual look, not just be a fence, given what else is allowed there.
Could we, could we add that language I suggested, as per the planning board's site plan recommendation?
So I think that's where we've gotta kind of talk about how we want that language, I mean, I'm not necessarily, I don't mind putting, being a little more specific about what can't go in here, but I don't want, I don't feel comfortable just not doing anything with this front entrance. I think we need to have a condition around that, and if it turns out that through the planning board process, it's not feasible, you'll have to, I guess, come back if you don't like it, but I'm willing to be flexible around the size of the vehicle, or possibly the time of day, the time of day is harder to monitor, but I'd rather just work on the size of the vehicle. There's certain vehicles that we just don't want to be risking, I don't think you guys were planning to do that, but I think it needs to be in our decision, so it shows that we talked about it and considered it. I don't know enough about vehicle sizes to answer what you're talking about.
Is, is there a way to do the vehicle size limitation during restaurant hours, you know, I mean?
You know, at seven to noon time for any oversized loads, or seven to eleven AM for oversized loads, and then we use the other answer. Cause again, a majority of our loads that are coming in are coming in before one PM, and I understand that these restaurants are open at noon time for, for lunch, you know? So we do understand that, so.
And they'll have staff coming in before that and deliveries of their own, so I guess I just feel like there's certain sized vehicles that I wouldn't want coming in.
The big, the big thing is, well, that's a great question, um, but the biggest thing is for me is that if we're using that middle entrance, which is right at the front of the building, which again, we are planning on having a power gate, you know, the full width of the opening, if we are using that entrance for oversized, uh, you know, deliveries, even a fifty-three footer, we would have to, you know, figure out removing some of this island here, which I think will be great, because we could also use that to make a left-hand turn out of there and not have to go towards BJ's and make a U-turn and, you know, and I think that would help our flow tremendously. So, um, I've worked with that from day one, it's removing some of this curb, not necessarily the whole thing, but, uh, enough of it so that a, a trailer can use that, that, that curb's about nine feet wide, curb to curb, the island, the island, I'm sorry.
You're talking about the island, yeah.
Yeah, the island, yeah, so that's about nine feet wide, and we have, we would have to be able to, you know, swing the tractor in towards that island to make the right-hand turn into the parking lot. So I would propose removing some of the island and, and, and striping it, just doing a line striping, but most people notice that on their side of the road.
Yeah, so those modifications, I, you know, it could happen in the center island, or it could happen on the landscape island, it's just through your property.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, we'll look at the, the truck turning, uh, diagrams and, and, and pick the best choice, you know, so.
Yep.
Um, I, I think that's totally doable, um, I think probably a good way to, um, not necessarily totally restrict that northern access point, but, uh, if you put signage along the frontage, it's a Shaughnessy, um, crane service, truck entrance, uh, ahead, uh, you know? That way your drivers know where to go in, where to go out, they're gonna use that, that front entrance. You know, the restaurants are gonna need deliveries too, so we can't totally restrict trucks, right, they, they're gonna have their trucks, um. I, I thought about, well, maybe we could do some physical modifications so that only passenger cars get in there, but the restaurants also need trucks to go in. Uh, but if we want your primary entrance to be down by the front, we can accomplish that with some signage and then, uh, the modification to the, the islands in that area. I think it'll give you a, a nice entrance to your property.
One, one of the other problems might be too, you guys use low beds. You guys have low beds?
Yes.
We do.
With the, with the incline, is there enough room for them, not enough room, but enough clearance for the, uh, low bed to come up without hitting the?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Sure, if, if I may, just on clarification of trucks, the restaurants are serviced, uh, by thirty-two foot tractor trailers, because they make a lot of city deliveries. Some of their trucks are forty-five foot, fifty-three footers, and Kohl's is serviced by fifty-three footers now. So that's the type of trucks they got. The low beds, yes, all the low beds are adjustable, different heights, it'll get you that if it's low. That roadway wouldn't be approved if it didn't have that clearance, you know, to, to compensate for the low beds. And on the very wide loads that they would do periodically out of there, have to be moved very early in the morning anyway under mass permits. So they're not gonna be pulling in these big double wide things with the flags on them during the middle of the day, because the lot prevents that. And the average weight of the trucks, uh, are in, they can get an overweight permit that gets them a little bit more for different loads, but it will stay in that eighty thousand, which is what every other truck that delivers to Kohl's and goes through there, eighty thousand pounds is the state law. So it's not that it's gonna be doing any extra damage to the pavement, curbing, things like that. It, it should be a seamless transition, because all the trucks, although they look different, you know, are, are set up for the same way for the roads.
So I guess it's just a matter of what type, what could there be a condition that, in terms of this northern entrance, that, you know, we, I, I have no problem leaving it to the planning board to come up with your plan around these entrances and signage and all that piece of it, but something around here that, um.
What if we said no trucks over fifty-three feet on one, uh, trailer?
I'm just sure I'm on this one, cause this is.
Amelia. I don't wanna overcomplicate things, but during restaurant hours.
That's hard to know what that is, because your definition of restaurant hours and mine could be very different. They will have deliveries various hours, they're gonna have people coming in and.
All right, don't we, you know, if, if we could, if we could do that, you know, no trucks with a, with a trailer length over fifty-three feet to utilize that northern entrance.
But I think what's difficult, I mean, what Joe had mentioned as well, um, I mean, Kohl's is currently getting those same deliveries that we're, we're talking about, and there are trucks currently coming in and out of that entrance, so I, I personally am hesitant to.
Right.
Say, have a stipulation in there that it's absolutely not allowed.
Yeah, right, I mean, right now for Kohl's delivery, that, that is their, that is their loop around, they have to pull in there, because to access their loading dock, they have to be coming from around the side of the building, obviously with the island in the middle that we would eventually propose going in front of the planning board and removing part of, one, to make it easier for us to swing in there and not have to utilize the north entrance, and two, making that left-hand turn, which would be great for everyone, uh, you know, that is the best way as of now to access our loading dock, to, to come around, nose up and back right into it, that hangs in the same way.
Also, that might be something you could look at in your renewal, and you'll have that, that extra time to, to, to monitor it, and if, uh, looking at police reports or whatever, so it'll allow them to, you know, to show you that it's not an issue.
And I also can't stress enough, and I know you mentioned there's no perfect way to monitor this, I can't stress enough what percentage of these loads we're talking about are from five to eight AM, um, when this place is an absolutely dead ghost town, uh, just, just another consideration.
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand is if we did something and said no trucks over fifty-three feet to use the northern entrance.
Yeah, that's.
Is that workable for you guys?
Absolutely, yeah, cause all of our delivery trailers are fifty-three feet or less. Like, when, when FedEx or someone delivers to us, half the time there's a little pup trail, so only twenty-eight foot trailers, you know?
But the longer flap beds that you have are.
Are only forty-eight footers actually, like fifty-three is your standard long box.
Forty-eight. Do you have vehicles over fifty-three feet?
Extendables. Uh, some extendable trailers, but those would not likely be in there.
So that's sort of an illusory condition, I guess, huh?
But it keeps status quo.
And we have other yards we operate out of, so we, we're gonna, we can try to keep, I mean, again, I'm not a huge fan of these islands anyways for oversized equipment, so try to keep this limited to, uh, standard, you know, non-overdimensional loads, but.
That's what you would think would make sense?
I think at this point, given all of the to be determines with the planning board and whatnot, and, you know, I think there's a number of decisions we may lead to islands and screenings and the gate locations and everything else, you know, I think, you know, there's a lot of contingencies that could exist, right, and I think, Marguerite, I don't wanna speak for you, but I think what you and I are kinda thinking is we don't want the character of the north side of this lot to change as a result of this proposal, right? And if right now, there are fifty-three foot trucks, you know, kind of taking that right, during certain hours that makes sense, and going around the building, right? I think as long as we put that as the limit of the condition, it might not mean anything today, but I think it'll prevent there being any changes that might now have, you know, some of these longer, larger oversized trucks coming through there in the future, which would change the character of that part of the property.
Mm-hmm.
And then we, we can, you know, everything else will work its way to the review.
And I do think Joe's point is, is well taken, that, you know, after the three-year period, you're gonna have an opportunity to see, have there been problems, have there been conflicts with, with, uh, traffic movements or anything like that.
Okay, what do you think, does that work for you guys?
Yep. We've got a lot of.
Um, so then the other piece would be how do we word the language about the fencing? Or the approval of the planning board, I mean?
There's gotta be approval of the planning board anyway, cause the planning board's gonna require it. I mean, they, they know they have to put up a ten-foot fence, but, um, and the planning board will, will probably make them not put up the, uh, chain link, so. And PVC does work much better, I've had both.
And whatever this is, it's double walled, it looks a little more substantial, but just a, it's a slat, so.
Right. I think we got a sample of that, because like I said, it doesn't look like you're standing, we, we installed the slats in our new, uh, new facility at one oh eight, and it does, it serves a purpose, but it doesn't block things you can still see through. This definitely have a piano, it's a lot more slack, and, and again, you know, from a cost stand, standpoint, is to go with a solid ten-foot, this isn't a Home Depot fence, to go to solid ten-foot fence would be very expensive. And we're not trying to cut corners, but to be spending a half million dollars on a fence just to, you know, block out what we're doing in there is when I think we can get the same end result out of something like this. I think we, we take a look at it, you know?
Well, it sounds like you're gonna have to convince the planning board, not us.
Yep, yep, no, I just said.
I've heard the argument many times, and I'm not the decision-maker on the planning board, um, for aesthetic items like this, um. I just know that I haven't seen, there aren't many successful, uh, applications that were the slatted chain effects.
We might be the first.
Always trying.
Instead of pressing.
I, I wanna see, and we're gonna get.
So I'm looking for that.
Bring, bring, bring some samples.
Yeah, no, we're gonna get, yeah, we will.
Yeah, bring yourself a sample.
All right, so, just trying to, trying to give all my conditions, so.
Is, is this board able to waive the height requirement?
Wasn't asked for.
The bylaws, yeah, I know, the bylaw, um, and I'm just thinking of the phrasing and of your decision, uh, and if there could be some phrasing in there that says adequately screened by a solid fence or barrier, uh, because they do have that vegetated buffer along that frontage, and I hate to spend a ton of money, I'd love to spend a ton of money on a ten-foot high fence, where you only see a small portion of it, if anything, and it really provides very little screening effect. Just, and I don't know that that will be the case, but it could be, because the road's lower, the, the burn's higher, and then their parking lot is, is down behind that. If there's any flexibility in language, but that's.
I think the bylaw is pretty specific, I think the only option is, uh, fence or landscaping.
Yeah, I know, I read it.
Eight, eight, eight foot, we prefer it up.
It's hard, because we don't know how tall, what we're getting, I mean, I, the pictures help, but we're not really.
Yeah, in, in the parking lot itself, it probably makes sense to go with a ten-foot screen, but along the road frontage, it might not make a lot of sense to that.
Well, I guess you'd have to come back and ask us.
There's a variance in the process, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that'd be a variance from that.
The bylaw does say.
It says at least, we can go higher.
At least, at least ten feet of height.
I don't know, I mean, it seems pretty.
I mean, I don't, again, you know, on its face, we don't have an issue with the height, we're saying, but as, as, as Chris mentioned, if we, you know, I think, I think the only area, correct me if I'm wrong, the only area we're suggesting might have to be other than the fencing we're showing is the area facing the restaurants, correct? Doesn't matter what we have back here or here, or here in front, right?
Right.
Okay.
So screened from view, so it'd be along Technology Drive.
Right. Right.
And along the restaurant area would be the view.
Right. Oh, yeah, so it'll be, there will certainly be screen, I think the concern is that entire perimeter, we don't wanna have to put PVC fencing on.
So, well, you could, yeah, you can talk to the planning board about everything else, but it's, the screen from the outside view to me would be this area and this area.
Right, right.
You're doing it, those two aspects of your property.
Yeah. I think, I mean, so I think we're, you know, we're proposing something along the lines of what we're showing you, subject to if, if the planning board wants us to do something different in the area facing the restaurants. But I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't have to get into doing PVC, either along the ticks in the driveway, it's gonna be behind the landscape, number one, and then out back, it's basically only gonna be seen by our people. Keep in mind, look at.
You can talk to the planning board about whatever they require.
The restaurants only go back that far, right, so back here.
Right, that's not outside view.
Right, right, exactly.
Nobody sees that even from a down twenty-four.
Right, right, they don't, they don't.
I would agree, yeah, to my, to me, the way I look at this bylaw, the outside view is this area and this area.
Right, right, right.
It's not even back here. Whatever you talk to the planning board about.
I think for our purposes, it's more of security, yeah.
One of the conditions I would be looking for in this case is not just the fence, but with landscaping in front of it, and you can use existing landscaping. So you certainly wouldn't have to put more in, along Technology Drive, any existing landscaping can be used and that, but it would be both a fence with landscaping, and it doesn't, you don't have to meet the condition of the landscaping here.
Right, right.
Like fence with, with landscaped frontage, at the discretion of the planning board.
That, that's fine.
Okay. So I can, I'll indicate fence with landscaped frontage, um, at discretion. Planning board are able to use existing, existing landscaping. So I have that condition, the condition about no manufacturing, repair, vehicle cleaning on the property, um, no trucks over fifty-three feet to use the northern entrance to the property, um.
Can you just list us the trails of fifty-three feet?
Trailers?
Yeah, it's, it's all, kind of listed by trailer, but.
That's fine.
Please, thank you.
I don't know the, I'm probably, I'm for that, um. No cranes to be stored on, um, on the location, uh, hours of operation are Monday to Sunday, nine, five AM to nine PM. Renewal December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
I, I think I can speak, I kind of, we're, we're fine with all of those conditions.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve this special permit as requested with the following conditions. Uh, renew December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, uh, hours of operation, five AM to nine PM, Monday through Sunday. Uh, no cranes to be stored on the location, um, the develop, the property owner will construct a ten-foot fence, a, at least a ten-foot high fence, um, with landscaping in front of it, uh, to be determined at the discretion of the planning board, they are able to use existing landscaping and, um, there's no trailers over fifty-three feet to use the northernmost entrance and no manufacturing, repair, or vehicle cleaning shall be allowed on the property.
The landscaping is only going to be in, on Technology Drive, right?
No, also by the, in front of the fence along the restaurant.
In front of the restaurants?
Yep. Yeah, because that's where they're going to have to add the, where they take the islands out inside the parking lot, they're going to add the previous material along that fence, so they'll have, there'll be landscaping on there, so basically, oh. So basically, it's going to go straight across there, it's, yeah, they're going to, so they're going to increase this landscaping here and fill it in.
Not in front of the gates.
No.
Not in front of the.
No.
The purpose of the.
Yeah.
Right, no, no.
Painted on trees.
I think that's it, six, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Great, thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it so much.
Good to see you all. Thank you, everyone.
Good to see you, buddy.
Great, I won't see you till.
Thank you so much.
When do we continue the other one? See you, thank you. So, happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you. I don't think I have anything coming up before then. Oh, I did want to mention to the board, um, yesterday was the expiration of the twenty-day appeal period on Dubruch, you like. Uh, so we got the decision certified today and recorded and now it kind of registered here, so thank you again for all your help and I appreciate it.
So you made one of those, that's the meeting with the state?
Okay, we, we, um, we don't want to let this in.
Yeah. Motion open case number four, three fourteen. No, I, I keep hearing the same thing, and then after I mentioned that, and I found what I was working for.
I got it.
Who's second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone, thank you.
Okay, I got a letter from Mr. Rupp, uh, oh no, it's from the town of Stoughton, too much to run. As I said at the ZVA meeting on October third, the Stoughton Town Plan, Bill Roth is going to present an annual town meeting and make possible changes regarding short-term rental, along with an advisory on how towns should deal with new Affordable Homes Act recently passed into the law by the governor. That being said, we believe it is prudent to hold off on any action regarding the R and, the R, E, F, and B use of a, of a bad risk, because we can revisit this in the spring when we should have more concrete definition of the use of E, F, and Bs. Thank you, Jack Erickson.
Yeah, so pretty much he's just postponing the restrictions on the R and B.
So, uh, I just will continue on this until.
Well, he, or you can withdraw, I mean, if he's, it's your call, you can withdraw without prejudice. We just can't, we have to act on it somehow tonight.
Yeah, we, the case has to close, so if you submit a letter of withdrawal, you can.
Okay.
Um, no, I mean, uh, I agree with what, what he wrote in the letter, so.
Right, so then you have an appeal of his decision, he's shifted his decision. If he revisits it, then that would presumably give you an opportunity to re-appeal at that time.
Right, okay, yeah, I, I agree to that.
We just need that in writing, unfortunately.
Oh, this was all I told that you guys needed for, uh, for tonight, so.
It's actually not true, and I don't have a piece of paper. I do. We can take it. What do you want to say, Sean?
Um. Oh, what are we doing, withdrawing?
He, he, he's withdrawing his appeal, just, uh. Without prejudice.
I'm withdrawing my, my.
We'll, we'll say it.
Aye, right, it would be aye, and then his full name.
Yeah. Withdraw my, uh, appeal without prejudice.
Yep. Yep. Sign it, leave it.
Just get about a case number on it. I don't have the case number. Forty-three, fourteen.
My pleasure.
Does it have the case number on it?
Sorry.
Does it have the case number on it?
No.
Forty-three, fourteen. Forty-three, fourteen.
Those know.
Do you want a picture of that revised?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Just wanted to be there.
So, um, the correct motion is to dismiss?
To accept and withdraw.
Uh, motion to accept the withdrawal of case number forty-three, fourteen from the petitioner.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh.
We'll get a decision, we all set?
All right, thanks, guys, I'm good.
We have one decision.
Motion open case number forty-three nineteen. Second. Oh.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion to accept the decision in case number forty-three nineteen as written.
Second.
In session, all in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carried. Do you have minutes? Is that, any minutes?
Yeah, there's plenty of minutes.
I got a lot of minutes. No.
You can try and write them in portrait.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm doing.
New, new requirements.
Right. They have to be violated now.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Aye.